Somebody needs some 1040 WD to the front, please. WD-40.
There you go. We'll go ahead and call the Johnson City Council meeting number 21-10 to order. Brett, roll call, please.
Here.
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 I have a quorum. I want to welcome everyone that is with us this evening, both virtually as well as in the room. We, if you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up. If you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to present to the council. We would ask that when you do present that you limit your comments to two minutes. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to speak, we would ask you to turn your camera on so that we can see you and interact with you as you are presenting to us. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's ask Councilman Temple to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
I have a question on one item on the consent, but if I could just ask that when we come to the consent and then we don't have to remove it to non-consent. Is that okay?
There are no changes to the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Brett, roll call, please. Or vote, please.
Mark?
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is public communications and we have, I guess it's not listed as an item, but we have an introduction to make this evening. Jenna?
I suppose this is really low.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to introduce you to Maddie. She's been here for about two months now, but Maddie wants to come up. She is our new communication specialist, so I'm very excited to have her onboard. A lot of the social media posts that you've been seeing on the city page and the Johnson Town Center, she's also been helping out with police and fire. She's managing all of that. So I know she's done a few videos with a few of you. You will see her around, so welcome Maddie. Hi, I think I've met a few of you at this point, but like Janet mentioned, I'm Maddie Vanderlanden, the new communication specialist here. I'm most recently coming from the Iowa Department of Agriculture where I worked for Secretary Mike Nag. I ran his 2018 campaign as his political director and then went into his official office and was working on policy and communication strategy for the last few years. I have a big passion for communications, obviously all things related and content creation. So I feel very fortunate to be here at the city, working with Janet and the wonderful team here to be able to be creative and post videos, make content creation, social media. So thank you in advance for helping out with all that and participating. It makes a big difference for us. So, thank you. Nice to meet you all. Thanks.
Maddie, we want to welcome you. It's hard to believe it's only been two months with everything that you've been involved in. You are doing a fantastic job for us, so thank you for what you're doing. And I do know that Secretary Nag is not very happy with us stealing you away, so. But we're, you know, his loss, our gain, you know?
Very excited to be here. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the National Public Works Week proclamation. Matt, did you want to say anything about that?
We were, we were going to recognize, we've got an employee, Steve Buckaloo, that's a 25-year employee, celebrating that this, this week. And he conveniently took the week off to go fishing.
Okay. We will, we'll get that signed and you can provide that to him when he returns from his fishing trip, as long as he has enough fish to share with all the rest of us. Oh, wow. There you go. The next item on the agenda is the proclamation rescinding powers, measures, and authorities granted under the emergency proclamations, numbers 2020-01 and 2020-03. I think we did get the revised proclamation out to everyone in advance.
Yes, it was posted on board docs.
Essentially, what the proclamation does is it does resend two of the proclamations that we issued earlier in the COVID emergency time. The first one that gave gave the city administrator and directors the authority to provide some flexibility around some of the employee policies as well as around purchasing items to address the COVID emergency that we were dealing with at the time. The other one dealt with oh, yeah, with the required use of, the required use of face mask in city-owned buildings as well as the strong encouragement to the retail and other commercial business establishments in our community to put COVID require mask requirements in place to encourage our public to wear masks when they are outside in situations where they could not socially distance. So that's what those two proclamations did and what the new proclamation does is it rescends both of those. It does leave in place and modifies to some extent the third proclamation that was issued at the time that responded to a request from the Johnston schools to give some flexibility to relax the requirement on doing fire drills during the time of the pandemic, recognizing that many of their students are learning virtually as well as they had some in classrooms and those that were in the classrooms, it would take away the time that they were actually in the classroom. So that one continues, the vote continue for some time, probably until the end of this school year and then we'll reassess it at that time. But that will stay in place even with this new proclamation. But the new proclamation, as you all know, is being issued in response to guidance that we received from CDC last week, relaxing the requirement for the use of face mask, encouraging people who are not vaccinated to continue to wear their face mask and to social distance. But in situations where individuals are fully vaccinated, CDC came out and said that it was no longer required. It was their, their guidance that it was no longer necessary to wear face mask. So, but the new proclamation will do is it will remove the requirement that the public coming into our public buildings are no longer required to wear face mask if they are vaccinated. They will continue to be encouraged to wear face mask if they are not fully, fully vaccinated. And we would continue to, you know, and what it does is it allows businesses, obviously, to continue those restrictions if that's what they prefer to do and if they want to take a more relaxed approach, they're allowed to do that as well. So that's what the new proclamation would do.
Mayor, I might, I must be, I must not have heard, I thought the CDC said you didn't need to wear masks outside if you were vaccinated. They also said inside too? Okay, so I didn't get, I hadn't read that. And so basically this proclamation is going to say, like those signs that we have on the outside of City Hall where masks are required is going to go away? Are we going to say something like masks are suggested?
Yeah, we need to work on the language of it, but it will say something to the effect that if you're vaccinated or I'm not exactly sure what it's going to say, but, but the expectation is that if someone coming into the building is fully vaccinated, and obviously we're not going to card them coming in, so it's kind of on an honor system. But if they are fully vaccinated, there will not be a requirement that they wear a mask entering our public buildings. But if they're not fully vaccinated, they would be encouraged to wear a mask. But again, we're not going to have somebody standing at the door, carding people as they come in.
Well, if we don't know what the sign's going to say, shouldn't we wait to, to adopt this, this new proclamation until we figure that out? I think we, we're going to, what are we going to put up on the sign tomorrow, the door?
The sign will say something to the effect pursuant to CDC guidelines, if you are fully vaccinated, masks are not required. If you are not, we would encourage you to continue to wear your mask.
Okay, well, initially you said we weren't sure what the sign was going to say.
Well, I don't have the, yeah, no, I, we hadn't discussed the exact wording of what the sign was saying.
I guess, I guess that's where I'm, I, I was not aware that this item was going to be discussed tonight because, you know, I didn't, I was out of town all weekend. And so I didn't pick up on this, even though it was on board docs, but so I'm kind of, I mean, whatever, so. I just, I think if we are going to adopt a policy, it would make sense to have thought through specifically what would be the replacement. Didn't feel, at least initially we were there. Sounds like we're kind of maybe a little closer to that.
What other communities in the state are doing at the present time. On Friday, the city of Des Moines lifted their restrictions. I think also on Friday, the city of Cedar Rapids lifted their restrictions. We're getting inquiries from the media on what our plans are as probably other central Iowa communities as well.
Again, I, there was no discussion about this. There was no email, hey, be prepared for this or this discussion about, hey, we're getting contacted before, so all this is a little bit new, so. So are we, are you looking for us to make a motion on this or?
No, this is just a proclamation. This is just to make you aware that this is what has been prepared in response to the CDC guidelines.
Yeah, so like I just, but the last time we did a proclamation, we actually then did a resolution supporting the proclamation. We're not doing that this time. Is that the plan or?
That was not the plan.
I just, again, trying to figure out how we're doing this.
This is, I mean, but what, again, what the proclamation does is it rescends to existing proclamations and it modifies the one existing proclamation that keeps in place the the, the flexibility that schools ask for on fire drills.
But we will not be adopting a resolution in support of this proclamation like we did on the previous proclamation.
There is not a resolution on the agenda.
That does raise a question to me for the city attorney and I'm actually in favor of this, so don't misconstrue that I'm trying, not trying to shut it down. But if the prior policy was adopted by resolution, do we have to have a resolution to rescind the prior policy then?
This is Tim Pearson. I do not believe that you do because this is just a proclamation and you're revoking the previous proclamations. However, it's entirely on the council. It's up to the council. If they want to have a resolution, they certainly could do so. But I don't think that it would be mandatory to, to do that based upon the, the way the proclamation is written.
And I don't believe the last time the proclamation didn't, we didn't adopt the proclamation by, we just, in essence, I, I think it basically supported the proclamation. So that's, that's the, that's what's different in this situation and I
Correct.
I guess we're, I'm not sure whether we're doing it differently this time, but we are, so.
Procedurally, the mayor has the authority under Iowa law to issue a proclamation in an emergency situation. And so that it was under that authority that we issued the first two proclamations. When the when we got to the situation where we felt that there was a, that we should impose a requirement to wear mask, we, we thought it would be good, good practice to have the council adopt a resolution showing that everyone supported, which was pretty extraordinary action on the part of the city to require our residents to wear a mask in response to the COVID situation.
I guess the, and I think it would have been appropriate at this time to do a similar type of resolution in a similar vein, but it, but that decision of it was made not to do that in this case, so I'm just noting that. Hope that that's, if that's appropriate.
My thoughts are in, sort of in line with Councilman Copes. I think that we could go ahead with the, and you know, I'm in support of going ahead with your calling back these proclamations, but I do feel like there's still a discussion to be had for the next stage of how we're dealing with the pandemic. I would like this, I know, Mayor, that you and I have talked separately about things about vaccination for the staff, et cetera. And I also know the legislature has been dealing with some of this and so it's kind of up in the air of what, what, what they will, what, where that will end up. But I do feel like a conversation should be had at the city council level about how we're dealing with, you know, this, the people that use the city hall and the vaccination question on staff at some point, but going ahead with your rescinding, I think it's on me.
Did I have some conversation about that as we were talking about rescinding the proclamations as well? And I don't know, Jim, or if you or Teresa can respond to how we are handling the employees?
Well, again, based on the guidance from the CDC, our employees, we are actually, we're going to talk tomorrow about what we're going to do as far as changes from CDC guidance. If our employees are fully vaccinated, they would not need to wear a mask anymore, although we're going to encourage them, particularly if there's situations where they can't socially distance or when they're meeting with members of the public that they don't know whether they're vaccinated or not. So we're still going to have some guidance, guidance for our employees, but we are going to be relaxing some of the masking requirements that we've had.
You know, this situation changes almost every day now, unfortunately. And some days, you know, we think that, you know, last week they were saying social distance three feet and then they moved it back up to six feet and then they come out with a, with a guidance on Friday saying, you know, no mask are required any longer if you've been vaccinated. So I mean, I think we're going to have to be just a little bit flexible, fluid and, and nimble as we continue to work through this.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with any of that. I just kind of wish we would have been taking a follow-up more, first of all, I sort of wish we would have gotten a heads up prior to the meeting about this.
And I
And the plan, we could have talked through the plan because the plan's a little different than it was previously and there was no communication. So lack of communication, I think, is unfortunate in this situation and wish that hadn't happened. So one, to make sure that's clear. And two, I, I, I think it would have been valuable for us to follow like we did with the last mask one, to have a resolution supporting it. So that would have showed up to broader action. Just wanted to communicate those.
And, and I appreciate that, Councilman Cope. This is something that happened on Friday. I asked the question, you know, what, what do we have in place? The proclamations were sent to me. It seemed clear that we needed to resend some of the proclamation language that was, that was in place. At the same time, other mayors in the, in the state were taking unilateral action and just lifting their restrictions. We did send the material out in the, with the agenda. It was there.
Right, but also it's pretty common for, hey, this is an item. This, this doesn't typically an item that's a highlighted item would maybe would follow into the consent agenda or non-consent agenda. And so if that's, you know, I'm just going to make my statement and we'll see where it goes.
It is not an agenda, or it is not an agenda item. It doesn't require action by the council tonight. Any concerns about me going ahead and signing the proclamation?
No, we fully have the authority. I would have, I mean, if you want to do that, that's your, your decision.
As a sign of proclamation, we will communicate to our residents and to visitors to our public buildings, you know, going forward and will prepare some signage, letting them know that the expectation is if they have not been fully vaccinated, we would encourage them to continue to wear their mask. But if they are fully vaccinated, the masking requirement no longer exists. We are still under public communications. Is there anyone in, in the audience to address council on an item that is not on the agenda? We will go first to people in the room. Saying none. Brett, do we have anybody online that would like to address the council? Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda and that is public hearings. We have one scheduled public hearing this evening and that is to conduct a public hearing to amend the budget for the year ending June 30, 2021 and to consider approval of resolution number 21-139. And we will open this public hearing at 7:27. Teresa?
Council. I know we just amended the budget two meetings ago, but we had final decision made regarding the bond sale and the closing of our 2021A bonds, which is going to include a refunding of our 11C and our 13A, which I had included in that amendment that we passed two weeks ago. I needed to take those back out. And so they will be in the closing for our 21A issue, which will take place after July 1st instead of before July 1st, which is what we thought was going to happen. So my apologies for that. However, there were a few other things that did come up along the way. The, the Northwest 86th Street side path, 54th Reconstruction Project, this intersection project, our Beaver Lay Overdrive Project. Those capital projects got started a little bit quicker than were included in the budget as far as expenditures. Funny to add, add those expenditures into the budget amendment. So this amendment does raise our expenditures, 1 million, almost a million three, a million 294. And it actually decreases our revenue by approximately, let it up here, revenues decreased by approximately a million eight. So there's a net effect of our expenditures exceeding our revenues in next year's budget by about 10 million two. Again, that's capital projects. Remember the timing. It swings so hard for us to predict when those projects are going to happen, when we issue the debt and when the expenditures are going to occur. So I don't think there's anything that should be shocking or worrisome to you at all about that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The public hearing on this item, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council? Brett, do we have anybody online? Okay. We will close the public hearing then at 7:29. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-139?
Well, moved.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. We'll take a motion and a second first and then we'll go to the item that you want to discuss, John. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approval.
I recall the item number, David, maybe you know it's the rezoning that's being referred to P and Z. Hell. Was this previously discussed at a work session or anything, maybe before I came back? Or is this just kind of coming out of the blue? It just kind of took me by surprise. Pardon me? Okay. Okay, and is there any background you can share about it? It just, like I said, it just kind of came out of left field to me and I sort of wondered if there was any, any backfill we could hear.
This is the property or what's commonly referred to as Simpson property in the southeast corner of, southwest corner, excuse me, of Northwest 86th Street, Northwest 70th Avenue. Sort of long, but on the market. This proposal would be townhome proposal, so they're requesting a rezoning to R2 and R3 just to allow a couple of different product types. But largely detached, kind of a detached townhome senior-oriented project. They are preserving commercial, the C2 that's existing along 70th, kind of towards the eastern end. There's some drainage way that goes through there, but there is a portion of that that is, is developable. But that's, that's kind of the background we have. Like, so we've gone in that with them once and
I just wasn't sure how much. I mean, it's such a stark departure from what we've thought for so many years. And I know it sat there for a lot of number of years too, so I can see where there might be some question, but I just wanted more detail, so thank you.
Not a huge departure from what's currently in the comp plan. We did look at this as one of our focus areas and did introduce some, the idea of some residential here in that process, so.
But it won't require a comp plan amendment then?
Um. We probably have to do a little bit cleanup. The, the Rio into the west has a commercial lot and the comp plan shows that sort of being extended over. They're trying to accommodate that by maintaining the commercial lot a little bit further to the east. So we may need to just do a little cleanup, but it's not a, it's not a significant departure from what's currently in the comp plan.
Thank you.
Dave, when we talked about, I do, did we talk about this project of an economic development committee or some committee meeting that I? So I can't, what was the discussion about the part on the 70th? It was, it was some discussion about that, some element of that being commercial or, and I can't remember how.
That's what's still, on this map, still shown in blue. They're not proposing that.
No, I'm talking about the, the green, kind of the, the, there's that segment that goes all the way up to 70th, right? The boot kind of part there. So that would be
And their request, that would be residential. They are maintaining further to the east, that kind of goofy shaped blue is, would be, still be.
But it, but the, right, I guess the part I'm talking about is the part between is, it would, there would be, I, I, all I'm trying to remember is, did we talk about trying to protect somewhere, the area, the frontage along 70th, this commercial? Or was there a reason that we agreed to allow?
That, we had the discussion that there was, I need to preserve it. I think they're trying to accommodate that by what they've shown a little bit further to the east. So I mean, that's, and that'll be part of the
But you would have commercial to the west, commercial to the east and residential in between.
That's the request. Yep.
I guess my question was, I was trying to remember when we talked about this, how we talked about resolving that. Maybe we didn't get into that level.
I don't know that we got too deep into it. That's all off to the back and full snow.
The only thing this, what's going to happen here is that it initiates a request. It doesn't make the zoning. It just means that we're going to start talking about it and
All, all tonight's action does is send it to planning and zoning commission, so. Yep. And they are, they did let us know they are going to host a meeting. They pulled the neighbor notice list and they're going to host a meeting independent of a city action. They pulled the neighbor notice list, and they're going to host a meeting independent of a city action. I believe that they provided us that information. I'll go back and double check, and I can certainly send that out to the council, so you have that as well, if you're interested.
Other questions for David on this item? Not, we have a motion and a second. Brett, vote please.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 7A, consider second reading of ordinance number 1051, amending chapter 99, section 99.07, establishing sewer user charges effective July 1, 2021.
Haven't changed anything with the ordinance, and I've received no comments. I did include the additional information that Councilman Coe asked me to include at the last meeting in board box.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 10-51?
Overapproval. Second.
Brett, vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. 7B, consider approval of resolution number 21-136, a resolution approving an amended and substituted development agreement regarding parkland dedication for Bricktown-Johnston.
Evening again. Bricktown-Johnston is wrapping up development of their property at the intersection of Northwest 64th Place and Merle Hay Road. As part of their original site plan approval, council did approve a development agreement for parkland dedication. In that agreement, they did, they were required to provide some private onsite amenities in lieu of public parkland dedication and recognition that by them providing them onsite, it reduces the demand for public parkland. They have gone ahead and provided the clubhouse and pool, the central green space area, the bike, pet shelter building. The specific request tonight, though, is to eliminate the dog park, which was identified on the western edge of the site, and replace that with a rocked walking path around the pond in the northwest corner of the property. That dog park was pretty minor component of the project in, in a whole. So staff is comfortable with what they are requesting, which is the rock walking path in lieu of the dog park, because that requirement was specifically in an agreement approved by the council. It has been brought back for you this evening for approval of the, of the modification of the amendment. And I do believe we may have a representative of Bricktown-Johnston on the phone tonight, Todd Peterson. If there's any questions of him, or if he has anything he wishes to add, I can go into further details or ask, answer questions as needed as well.
Right, a little bit more of the rock path.
Um. It would go around. I can't control this, I don't think. So the top left of the screen there is a wet detention pond, and what they would like to do is a rocked path, so a delineated path around there that residents could walk around. They could take their pets around there as well. There's still be that open space in the back area. But how it was explained to the staff was there was concerns about the ongoing maintenance of a dog park as well as the potential liability. As they've continued to research it from the commencement of their development to this stage, they've decided that they would prefer to not have that dog park in lieu of this rock path. And if Todd is on the line, I might defer to him on some more specifics of how they would install that.
My immediate reaction, Clayton, when you said that they were replacing a, a dog park with a walking path is, well, if, I'm assuming that the reason why they had a dog park planned to begin with is because they allow pets in their apartments, at least some of the apartments. So if the dog park is eliminated, then where are all of these apartment dwellers going to walk their dogs? And does that suddenly become, you know, a nuisance then for all of the residents that live around there? Or the business establishments along there? So I am curious to hear Tom's response to that.
Todd, I don't know if you're on the line. I believe you might be one of the call-ins. We wanted, I, the one that's raising their hand.
Can't see him, but we can see his hand.
Hello, all. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
Todd, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Clayton, thank you. I'd like to thank Clayton for his help on this. And the answer to your question is, is we just kind of try to figure out the programming of the dark, dog park. You are correct. It is, it is an opportunity for, for tenants to get their pets out and to walk them. But we, we have a hard time of somewhat promoting an area to where, where tenants can take their pets and leave them unleashed, and they are kind of free to roam and get into the trouble that a dog can get into trouble with. So we are proposing to just add the walking path around the retention pond, which would be an opportunity for the tenants to exercise their pets that way. We do also have the large green space between the clubhouse and the dog pet area, which is probably an acre and a half or so itself. If you would, you know, drive around and look at dog parks in the metro and other areas, they just become somewhat of a, oh, an unsightly amenity, for lack of a better word.
Well, it sounds like you've thought through the need to provide some space for your apartment dwellers who have pets to take, you know, take them for a walk and to
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, we have. And, and that was actually, I mean, that was a concern of, when we kind of worked with Clayton this, that was one thing that, that they kind of expressed, well, we, we need to provide a place for tenants to exercise their dogs. And that's where we kind of thought maybe the, the alternative of the walking path around the pond would provide an opportunity to do that.
Hey, Todd, you were intending to still provide like the pet waste stations as well, correct?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
The residents are able to pick up after their pets, and there's still the pet washing station as well, which is in that building on the west end of the green space.
Yep, that's correct. So half of that building is designed for tenants to take their pets in there. We have somewhat large bathtubs, if you will, to create an environment, or just another amenity for the tenants.
Really what's being eliminated here is the off-leash zone, but all other amenities of the pet ownership would still be provided onsite.
That's correct. Yes.
Clayton, the, this dog park was also never public. It was only for the people living there. Is that correct?
Correct, private dog park.
It was private, yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-136?
Move approval, Coe.
Second, Martin.
Motion and a second. Brett, vote please.
Martin.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Item 7C, consider approval of the following, following items regarding PZ case 21-09. Subject, property is located at 11087 Northwest Towner Drive. Resolution 21-112, resolution accepting a petition and waiver for future improvements to Northwest Towner Drive adjacent to wooded acres plot one. Resolution 21-113, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding parkland dedication for wooded acres plot one. Resolution 21-114, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding public road construction and right-of-way dedication. Resolution 21-115, a resolution approving the final plot for wooded acres plot one. Clayton.
And I'm not going to go into excruciating detail on this plot since you have seen it several times in the past, unless desired. But a little summary here, it's a subdivision creating six slots for single-family homes, one unbuildable outlot, and one street lot cleaning up some right-of-way on Northwest Towner Drive. Few items of note, the applicant is proposing to meet their parkland dedication requirements by cash in lieu of land dedication. So there has been a development agreement presented to you for that, and they have paid the applicable fee. The development agreement regarding road construction and right-of-way dedication, that is related to a potential future north-south roadway connecting Northwest Towner Drive to Northwest Row Drive, as identified on the Thrive 2040 comprehensive plan. The actual alignment of that roadway to be determined with future design. But the, the agreement does reference back to a preliminary alignment, as identified on the preliminary plat, which was approved previously. And really what the agreement stipulates is the owners agree that the city has the right to construct that road, and the city has the right to purchase that right-of-way as well, and that they will sell that right-of-way to us at a time when it's determined needed by the city. So that doesn't become a hurdle for us to overcome if we ever decide to construct that roadway. That will largely be determined based on traffic needs in the area, on when or even if that roadway gets constructed. That's really the highlights of this one. Like I said, I'd be happy to go into further details needed or answering questions.
Considered questions, Clayton.
So this, there's a condition that basically says that if we desire to, to get the right-of-way to build the road, they have to sell it to us.
Yes, that's in the development agreement.
That's in, it's in a development agreement, okay. And that's binding on if they sell a prop, sell
Yeah, binding on current future owners, heirs, successors, assigns. We got that language in there.
Wait until this property, nothing wrong with that.
I'll take the master's degree.
Other questions? Seeing none, we have several resolutions here. Do we have a resolution approved, or do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-12?
The move, Coe.
Second, Martin.
Motion and a second. Brett, vote please.
Yes.
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 Passed. We have a motion to approve resolution number 21-113.
I'll move, Martin.
Motion and a second. Brett, vote please.
Ready?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve resolution number 21-114.
I'll move, Martin.
Second, Coe.
Brett, vote please.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-115? We have a motion and a second. Brett, vote please.
Yes.
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 Item 7D, consider resolution number 21-140, extending phase one town center land purchase and development deadlines.
Counsel, this resolution would further extend the deadlines for phase one development land purchase from June 1st to September 1st. Out an agreement and the site plan submission from Hanson with the closing date for the phase one properties, which Brett has pulled up here, includes two buildings on the intersection of Northwest 62nd and Merle Hay Road. OPAN Architects is currently working towards submissions on building design in June, July, and the intent is to begin construction in late August or September. Have a few renderings of what those buildings preliminarily look like. They are still a work in process. So do expect some changes to continue to happen as they meet with staff. Hanson does have six letters of intent for the two buildings. Hopefully those will turn into signed leases. They are working through that lease language now, and I think that would represent about 50% of the occupancy for both of those buildings combined. So we are working with their attorney on the development agreement that would cover both of those buildings in alignment with the previously discussed work session terms for phase one. We hope to have those in front of you prior to September 1st as well. That happy to answer any questions?
Do you have any information you give us about the potential people that are occupying these buildings? Businesses, I mean.
And it's Hanson's hope to have some announcements. As soon as they have the leases signed, they don't really want to announce with letters of intent. But I will say, I'm pretty excited about two of them that are up on Merle Hay Building, hopefully in the next 30 days or so.
Here's Adam, that they've designed this to complement the design of the city hall.
Wood tresses on both of those buildings are kind of a continuation of that theme. And then the next agenda item here with the trellis, which a very preliminary concept you can kind of see in a few of these renderings attached. All right, I'm very pleased with them. We'll see what the final designs look like. It looked like nice additions to the house.
Adam, the plan is still, not this building, but maybe, I don't know, can you scan, scroll to the second building? Yeah, that, that one. And so on the, on the south, I mean, it's the west half of that, it's intended that that would be a rooftop go location.
Side with an office use kind of intended for the second floor, and then the single-story portion, which attaches to the, buts that trellis, that's kind of designated restaurant space with, designed in a way that it could be a rooftop patio. This rendering seems to indicate that. We have not seen site plans for that building, so it, all I could
But it's, it's in the potential.
Only one we had any serious discussions on, and kind of the original town center discussion, first building. But, you know, it certainly looks like they're contemplating the option of a rooftop patio if you're used, but they haven't discussed that with staff.
Other questions for Adam?
But the, the two buildings that, that we're looking at right now are on the corner of
That was the one of the rooftop patio.
Okay. With the trellis in the middle.
Sorry, so the, the glass atrium is owned by the developer. The wooden trellis that we'll talk about in the next agenda item is on public property constructed by the city. Too many atrium.
Yeah. One has glass, the other doesn't.
Adam, you probably said this, but when can we expect this project to start? When, when, when will we actually see, see some action?
They were hoping for early August, and then they kind of looked at the timing aspects of when they could get steel, which we all know there's a lot of different supply chain issues. So in order to kind of have that construction be continuous, not having to pause, wait continuous, not having to pause, waiting for the steel, uh, they're now looking at probably sometime in September with potential groundbreaking, maybe at the, uh, the grand opening event. They've originally indicated about twelve-month construction schedule, but they think they condensed that down a little bit. So I would say summer of twenty twenty-two.
Further questions for Adam? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash one forty?
Move approval, cope.
Second, Brett Volts, please.
Yes.
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 Item seventy, consider change order number forty-six with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnson Town Center project.
Validated version, um, and feel free to ask questions. Uh, there is an owner contingency in that lease purchase agreement. Uh, that amount has gone up and currently sits at approximately one point two million dollars, although there are a couple of open change orders under Stafford view. Um, the reason that that has gone up is in part because we reduced the scope of the project, um, eliminating a parking lot. Uh, the drive-by aisle that goes east-west on the very northern end of the site and removed out some of the sidewalks that were going to be adjacent to future commercial buildings due to potential for damage on those sidewalks. Those commercial buildings uh, would eventually get underway and, and were delayed. Now with the two buildings that are being proposed here, um, in the previous item, we'd like to move forward with those adjoining sidewalk sidewalks and some of those tree plantings. Those were again in the original scope eliminated, are now going to be added back in. And then we also have this trellis, which was kind of conceptually conceived as part of the town center, but never designed or included in the scope of the lease purchase. Uh, and it was intended that that would be on the public property connecting those two private buildings. Uh, so that sidewalk is intended to go in place and, and be maintained by the association. Uh, and so we'd like to design and then construct this trellis so that it's completed along the same timeframe as those two commercial buildings, along with the sidewalk and those tree plantings. Uh, this change order number forty-six is to begin, uh, OPN's work on the design of that wooden trellis. Uh, so that as we move into the development agreements for those two buildings, uh, we know what we're doing from the cost standpoint and then can add all these items back into the lease purchase agreement to be completed. Don't have any other, uh, information on exactly what that looks like today, uh, but you've seen a few renderings in the past. And the idea is probably about a thirty-six foot tall wooden trellis, maybe with some sort of roofing on it, uh, and then some sort of a signage that stands out uh, up, up, above, above the intersection indicating Johnson Town Center. So that's the rudimentary, rudimentally elements of what we're looking at. OPN is designing both of the two buildings that Hanson's intending to construct and then also this trellis.
Annuity.
Other questions? Second, Martin. Yes.
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 Moving on to item seven F, consider approval of claims in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Maybe I could get away with it. Teresa, I can't, I can't read that number. It's all right. Consider approval of claims in the amount of eight million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents. Any questions for Teresa?
So it, it covers a debt payment or is it?
Debt service payment. The UMB bank has taken over bankers.
Uh, the, our debt service payments, principal interest payments for UMB Bank, uh, as our registrar, they come out of our account on May twenty-seventh now, so that they're all processed by June first. We have five Mondays in May, um, coming, kind of coming out a little early, so to speak. I mean, they won't, they won't take it out, but it, it's all processed with this batch of bills.
It's pretty common this time of year to have.
Absolutely.
Claims because of it, so.
We'll have our SRF payments also, um, coming out June first. That however, will be added on to your claims list for your June seventh council meeting, maybe.
June seventh.
Seventh, our first meeting in June. Yes.
You have a motion to approve?
Move vote.
Second.
Motion and a second, Brett Volts, please.
Yes.
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 Moving on to city administrator comments. Jim?
Just got a couple of items that I want to mention to the council. Before our next meeting, we'll have a couple of events that, uh, hopefully you've been notified of, but, uh, if you haven't, let me know and we'll get the information. First of all, this, um, Wednesday night, May nineteenth, there's going to be a candidates forum for the four candidates that are running for the open city council seat that is being coordinated by Jedco and hopefully the information has gone out and everybody's, uh, been able to, to get that. That will be a virtual event. And so that'll be this Wednesday, six to seven thirty is the timeframe. Also, the, the primary election will be held on, um, May twenty-fifth and that will, there, there's four candidates for the vacant council seat and that will narrow it down to two will be in the, the election, you know, on June twenty-second. So just want to make sure you have that information available. Also Jedco is going to have their annual development forum and that'll be a virtual event that's going to be on May twenty-fifth. And that'll be at three thirty in the afternoon. And, um, again Jedco's got information. If you haven't received anything, let me know and we'll be sure that you, uh, do get that information. Again, uh, that will be a virtual event. And I just, uh, I, I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder, but, um, I'm, I'm sure you're going to talk about the events we had this past weekend, but I, I did want to make sure that our staff that, that worked both on the Up Down dedication as well as the mayor's bike ride are recognized. Um, from the Parks Department, John Smits and Carrie Allen were very involved in, in not only setting it up, getting the food available from Hy-Vee, but then also Carrie was very active in getting things set up on, on Saturdays. So appreciate their efforts. Public Works, uh, and this relates more to the movement of Up Down and getting them, getting him on site and, and ready to go. Scott Shury and, and Matt Greiner were very instrumental in, in getting Up Down, uh, to the city. Uh, from the administrative side, um, David Wording and Adam, uh, were very involved in, in some of the aspects of getting Up Down ready to be put on display. David was obviously our photographer on Saturday, but, uh, um, Adam was very involved in making sure that, uh, Up Down was, um, cleaned up and, and ready to go for display. And then, uh, on the communication side, Janet and Maddie did an excellent job in, in, uh, getting information out and, and, uh, getting, um, pictures of the event and, and sharing that information. So just wanted to recognize the folks that were involved. It was certainly a team effort. And, uh, that's all I'll say about that because I'm sure you want to mention some more about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other staff comments? Seeing none. City council comments. Councilwoman Martin?
Um, I guess I have a couple, um, before the pandemic, we were voting in a different manner, uh, with no, I rally voting or whatever. I'm just wondering, sometime we'll go back to that, although I don't mind.
Your preference?
Actually, I kind of like this preference because, um, I just do more clear. So if, if there's a matter of discussion, I prefer this. The other thing is I was talking to, um, Creed and then Johnston, the owner, and I've forgotten his name.
Dennis.
And, uh, we were talking and I was telling him about the August twenty-eighth, the big, uh, bash, within a half. And he was very interested. He offered maybe overflow parking. He would be open, he said that day, but maybe people needed to park, they could park there. And it got me to thinking that, I'm sure Jim, you've already thought about this, but letting the business owners along Merle Hay know about the bash. I'm calling it the bash, whatever you want to call it. And also encouraging them, you know, like Bricktown has several dead trees across their frontage. They might want to spruce up their property, might be a good opportunity to get some more rentals. You know, let's put our best foot forward on some of this stuff. Uh, I walk up and down Merle Hay Road a lot on the sidewalks. And there are places that never get mowed, like that place on the south side of Bricktown, between Bricktown and the church. There's like a iron stake and a water meter or something. I can't remember what it is. It's like no man's land. Nobody claims it. Nobody cleans it up. Nobody take care, nobody takes care of it. So I know this is kind of picky, but in my idea, my, my thoughts are we're spending a lot of money on this event. It's a big deal for us. Let's sort of drop a note to business owners and, and let it, let them know. Let them be prepared and then also, you know, take a look at, at these, you know, minor things along our sidewalks and make it, make it look really great. That's my comments.
I would just add, I, I like the current form of voting as well. We call everybody's names, so I would support that, continuing that process.
I'm going to be ahead of the pass.
Ask you, Councilman Temple, what's your preference?
I'm not sure of the other word. I wasn't here.
Which is all in favor.
Hold back on those days, okay. Yeah, I think this is better.
Preference on voting? I've heard the, I've heard from all of you. I think that's, I, I think I prefer it that way as well, so. Um, yes, and to add on to what, uh, Jim has already said about, uh, the events of this past weekend, it was a beautiful day. Um, and a great day for a bike ride and, and also to, uh, celebrate the arrival of our, of Johnson's newest resident, Merle Up Down Johnston. We christened him and we gave him a full name. Um, it, it was, it was a fabulous event and I appreciate Jim, you calling out everyone who was involved because I could not have done that. And I know that it took a whole cast of characters in order to do that and do it as well as, as it was done. So, you know, we had the greatest turnout we've ever had for the mayor's bike ride. Probably a couple of things contributed with three, at least three things contributed to that. First of all, we had it on a Saturday. So we had more families, uh, turnout for children, uh, children, uh, were involved. Um, so we haven't had that in the past. It was a beautiful day. And I think, uh, you know, we had quite a number just turn out because of, uh, uh, the placement of, of Up Down, our newest sculpture, um, in Johnston. So we had a, a great turnout thanks to the council members that were, that were there. Uh, your attendance was appreciated. And then of course we had, um, you know, some celebrities. We had, um, Jerry, um, Scott, who had contributed Up Down to us, donated Up Down to us and, and she, you know, obviously was just absolutely thrilled that, uh, that her, her donation and, and, uh, she knows that we will take good care of him and, uh, that, uh, the residents and the visitors in, in Johnston who, you know, utilize our trail will be, be able to enjoy him for, for many years to come. And then we had, um, Adam Seltzer, who is a, an author and who has written, uh, two or three books that have included, uh, Up Down as kind of a feature feature item in his books. He was here from Chicago. He grew up in the, um, in the area. He actually grew up, uh, in Urbandale and went to the Urbandale schools, but we, uh, we christened him a Johnston resident on, on Saturday. Um, and, uh, he appreciated that. So anyway, we had, uh, had them here to celebrate and then, uh, Adam also read a, read a nice note from the sculptor himself, Mark Tackerson, who is, who lives in Hawaii and wanted to make it back, but because of COVID re- travel restrictions, didn't think it was very practical for, uh, him to, to come back for the event, but he did write a very nice note and, and, uh, couldn't be more pleased that, um, Up Down has found a new home here in Johnston. So you know, as I was thinking about what to say on Saturday, I started thinking about all the different pieces of, uh, public art we now have in Johnston and have planned for Johnston. And it wasn't that many years ago when we had almost nothing. I mean, I think the only thing that we had was the pitchfork, which isn't really public art because it's on private property and you can't go up and have your picture taken next to the pitchfork. Uh, and I think that was the only real piece of, you know, outside art that we had. But now we have, uh, you know, we have the Tree of Life. We also have the, um, tree sculpture that has been moved from the Wallace Elementary over to the library. And if you haven't seen that over there, they've done a really nice job cleaning it up, uh, improving on the, on the piece itself and actually erecting it so that it, uh, it looks very nice over the library. So if you haven't seen that lately, uh, you want to go by and, and take a look at that. What are some of the others?
We have Flight, which is.
We have Flight. Tom and Judy have donated, um, to the community, which is, is beautiful as well. Um, and it seems like there's one more, so.
Looking forward to Ripples.
We'll have Ripples coming here fairly shortly. So, you know, we're making good progress in a relatively short period of time and, and becoming an envy of, uh, our neighboring communities in, in the art pieces that, uh, we are acquiring. So thanks to everyone for their support and, and making that happen through the years, because I think it really does say a lot about a community when you have that kind of, you know, art and culture that you can, you know, share with, with, uh, with our residents and the rest of the world. It says something about the, uh, community that we are and the people that live here. So thanks for everyone for, for their support in making that happen. So with that, is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Don't forget to turn off your microphones.